Council President.
Well, let's do this over again. I call Wednesday, July 2nd, 2025 council meeting order. I met with the council members at 5 o'clock in the sixth floor council conference room for briefing to discuss tonight's agenda. At 5:30, we moved here to the first floor chambers to conduct the council meeting in person, and because we encourage community involvement, we invite the public to join us in person or participate via remote option through Zoom or view on Bcat. For anyone who's attending in person and plans to comment tonight, we ask that you please print your name clearly on the sign-in sheet. That is optional. However, this will ensure that your name will be included in the meeting record. For more information, please refer to the Public Recognition and Public Comment Process handout. It's in the back of the room next to the sign-up sheet. With that, we'll turn to our agenda tonight, and we'll start with, as we always do, with the mayor's report. Welcome, Mayor Wheeler.
All right, testing. All right. Thank you, new IT Director Mike Radley. Now, if we just, thank you, Mike. We got Finance Director Mike Riley filling in tonight for our IT department. Good to see you, Council and Council President. Thank you. Just a quick, quick briefing tonight for the mayor's report. First slide. Beautiful picture of our marina. All right, Quincy Square update. So just a couple of quick shots. If any, you have not been downtown lately. These are photos of as of today. Nice landscaping, hardscaping, features to, to be able to rest, taking the music and some entertainment on our new Performing Arts Plaza. It's really coming online quickly. July 12th and July 13th will be the grand opening weekend of festivities, starting at 11:00 a.m. on July, Saturday, July 12th. Mike, next slide. And I just want to wish all of you a happy Independence Day and the public, and to just hope that you get to celebrate and be safe at the same time. And that concludes my report tonight, Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, I'll turn to our city clerk, Ms. Hoover, to read the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Younger. For approval for, oh, excuse me, for approval on the consent agenda are the following items. A, Claims and Check Register, approval of the following checks and electronic fund transfers. One, check numbers 411-395 through 411-520, and EFT numbers V43839 through V43939, and the grand total amount of $4,336,151.33. Two, regular payroll for pay period ending June 15th, 2025, and the amount of $1,121,919.45. Three, retiree payroll for pay period ending June 30th, 2025, and the amount of $38,259.15. B, minutes of council meeting, June 18th, 2025. C, minutes of study session, June 25th, 2025. D, professional services agreement with Industrial Systems, Inc., for the Water Utility SCADA Master Plan. E, inter-local agreement with Central Kitsap Fire and Rescue for fueling. F, eliminate one corporal position and establish one sergeant position to the Bremerton Police Department and authorize the associated budget adjustment. G, ordinance number 5516 to authorize extension of franchise agreement with Cascade Natural Gas Corporation. H, inter-local agreement with Washington School Information Processing Cooperative. I, public works agreement with Flowline LLC for the Sheridan Road Sewer Replacement Project. J, grant agreement with WSDOT for the Safe Routes to Schools Improvements View Ridge Elementary Phase 2 Project. K, professional services agreement with New Line Services, Inc., DBA, Agate Asphalt for the Bremerton Safe Routes to Schools Project. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Does any member of the public wish to speak on any of the consent agenda items? We only ask that you please state your name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Having said that, does any member of the public wish to comment on any of the consent agenda items?
Jose Camacho, friends of Smith Cove, Rock the Block, it's probably come out garbled. The item is about the
Mr. Camacho, get a little closer to the
Thank you.
Thank you.
This comment is about the item regarding a change in the Bremerton Police Department in order, I guess, has a capacity to handle complaints against the police. And we have all heard, oh, I looked at the agenda packet, it just has one sheet, no information of any substance. I listened to the study session, and again, no information of any substance. Mochler mentioned he's part of a committee, and what the police department told her was kosher. I have no idea. You guys don't provide enough information for the public to be informed for meaningful participation in our government. So that's off the top. The other thing is, we constantly hear, I certainly have, I don't know if you guys are awake up here, that the homeless on the street are being persecuted. You can use another adjective for it, but I really don't know because the homeless cannot simply sit in a public space and rest or exist. They are moved about. We hear this from Rock the Block. Because I have been homeless, I know that the first thing I did as a homeless person was try to hide so I could just rest because your brains become mushed, you become exhausted, you become thirsty, you become hungry. You need to find a place to relieve yourself, your bodily functions, but you're going to get hassled by the cops if you do. So because we know that the homeless are being persecuted in Bremerton, why not, as a fiscal matter, stop persecuting the homeless? And maybe that'll reduce the complaints that the police department has. Or here's the other thing. Perhaps the city doesn't worry about it, but because the homeless are chased around, you guys don't have to worry about complaints because if you're hungry, thirsty, and hiding, you don't have the wherewithal to go to formal channels to complain about anything. You essentially become a fugitive in modern-day America, in modern-day Bremerton. So perhaps this complaint procedure should involve contemplation of stopping the de facto policy of persecuting the homeless in Bremerton, and you would save money, too.
Anyone else? Anyone else for public recognition? All right, I'm sorry, this is consent agenda. Anyone else wants to speak in any of the consent agendas? Mr. Riley, anyone on Zoom that had called in? Thank you. No one else for consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll turn to the council for motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Off to the question.
Councilmember Timberland?
Yes.
Revolowski?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. This concludes the consent agenda, and there are no general business items.
Correct. So now we'll go to public recognition. As indicated on the agenda, public recognition provides an opportunity for attendees to address the council on any issue that, well, basically, that wasn't on the consent agenda for tonight. This is not interactive, and the council is here to listen to your concerns and questions. Also a reminder, please, now that it is election season, please refrain from any comments on political campaigns or ballot measures. There'll be no public comments accepted via Zoom tonight unless prior arrangements were made through the city clerk by calling 360-473-5323 at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. Ms. Hoover, did anyone make those arrangements?
There were none.
Thank you. Again, we only ask that you state your name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. A timer system will be used, so everyone is treated fairly. With that, I now open up for public recognition.
Hey, guys. Jocelyn, I'm from Bremerton, Prairie Walk, also Rock the Block, and I come in here just so that you guys can kind of get an idea, but today I'm really specifically calling you guys to just put a moratorium on that anti-enforcement of that anti-camping ordinance that you passed. It's, it's turning out to just really be costing lives over any kind of beautification of the, of the areas that they're trying to do. You know, we see the mayor's report about how beautiful one part of downtown Bremerton is. And I truly believe that downtown Bremerton can be beautiful, but we've got to stop enforcement where we had three overdoses last night. And I know two people who overdosed specifically last night. It was after the sweep. As we know from statistics and studies, is that overdoses occur more after a sweep because they don't have their Narcan, they don't have their people around them, and they just have a lot of hopelessness because of how they're treated in sweeps. And specifically how they're treated by the Bremerton Police Department. This is not at all saying that all of BPD, I've met some of the most amazing individuals on the police force, so I'm not at all condemning them, but the, what they're asked and tasked to enforce is kind of an inhumane treatment of individuals. We had two individuals, one, I've told you guys about numerous times, a marine vet on the streets. He can't get into rehab because of infections in his legs. He can't get off the streets in the hospital because it's not serious enough. And no rehab place will take him. And so he's got absolutely zero place to go at all, and he's desperate to come off the streets. Let's stop the enforcement of this anti-camping ordinance until we have real meaningful solutions to people because they're just dying now. It's not even that we have second or third chances. They're just dying. And I agree that Quincy Square looks beautiful for places to rest, for people enjoying the music, but that shouldn't be, include everyone. And it shouldn't just include those. We need to have bathrooms down on the streets, especially if we're going to have a lot of people coming in to hang out on the streets of Bremerton, and it shouldn't come after we've been repeatedly asking for it for over four years and have shown that we can do it with porta-potties down there, porta-potties throughout the city. I mean, it's we've seen that the enforcement of homelessness as making it a crime, the criminalization of homelessness is not changing the solution at all. As prices are increasing, more people are becoming homeless, more single parents. We've got kids on the streets that are subjected to these types of, these types of actions. And really, you guys have the ability to stop it by just saying, until we get more clear guidance on how the police force should act, let's stop this because people are dying, and I will say it till I'm blue in the face, is that the beautification of our city means nothing if people die as a result of it. And that's, that's just the hard truth of what's happening out there. So thank you. Please do something.
My name is Robin Weldon. I would like to thank Jocelyn de la Madrid, Rock the Block, for speaking out for the homeless. And also Jose Camacho. I would like to adopt both of their comments as my own. Last week, I was, I spoke of witnessing the city's first inhumane sweep and throwing away of our unhoused residents' personal and survival property on November 4th, 2023. It condemned unhoused residents to extreme mental and physical suffering, loss of limbs, and death by exposure to freezing temperatures and rain and suicide. People who have nowhere else to go come back to Martin Luther MLK Place to find community protection, help, and, and though they risk arrest, rest, having their property thrown away and being pushed aside outside the city, sorry, with nothing left. The MLK Place unhoused tent refugees that have been dehumanized and criminalized by Bremerton's mayor and council in their 2023 implementation of the city's inhumane anti-camping ordinance and the 2024 vote from this council to get rid of the shelter provision when crushing and throwing away unhoused residents' survival property. This week, the city committed another cruel unjust sweep of our city's most vulnerable residents. I arrived too late and was only able to film after tents were, tents and lives were again destroyed and the unhoused community cleared. I took a photo of a city vehicle and garbage truck in front of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Place Street Sign. It, it's an abomination that this cruelty toward our poor residents is committed on a street named after Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who was an activist leader against racism, poverty, greed, and militarism. I thought about how white politicians like the ones in Bremerton love to co-opt and whitewash Dr. King's words to mitigate the harm they do to human beings. What is always conveniently omitted is that Dr. King, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. condemned capitalist greed and that harmed poor, oppressed, and exploited workers. He led the Poor People's Campaign and was an activist for economic justice, that everyone should have what they need, needed to survive. Can you imagine what Dr. King would say to the city's culture of?
Hi, my name is Tiara Bochamp. I wear many hats, and I do reside in the city of Bremerton. Well, not within city limits, but I work at the Puget Sound Naval Shipyard, and I'm currently the president of IFPTE. What I am seeing within where we are is that there are young, younger engineers and mechanics that are trying to get a job here, but they can't afford to live here. Even those complexes that you build right within the city limits, they're so expensive that they can't even, you know, they can't work at the shipyard. I, I think some, we're the largest, we're the largest agency here in Bremerton, right? And what people think is the federal sector is, gets paid well. As, you know, as expenses move up, like, we can't, we can't sustain a lifestyle here, even working at the federal sector. And so I felt the need to express that because all these things you're doing here are not being beneficial to the people who are supposedly have the cushy job that's supposed to be able to sustain a good living, and I am a mother of six children. I am also a Navy wife. I also have been a single parent for 11 years of my adulthood. There's, there's about 30% of single parents here in Kitsap County, a lot of them I know in Bremerton. I lead a single parents ministry, and about half of the 20 of the women that are in my single parents ministry are in transition of trying to find a place to live. First, a lot of them are battered. A lot of them have to deal with heavy court cases that cost a lot of money, and then they can't afford to live with their kids, and the poverty line is so high that they can't even qualify, you know, to get benefits from the state. So I just want to paint a picture of what that looks like. Also, me and my children, we serve the streets, and every single person on the streets has a story. And it all starts off in their childhood, and what people don't understand is that they think that, oh, this person was a young adult partying, and then they, you know, or they were a sailor in the military, and they just got used to partying and got addicted to drugs and got addicted, and that's not what it is. It's mental health issues from their childhood. Some people are being raped by their own parents. Some people are actually, you know, have been wounded in war, and what we look at them is like they could make better decisions, but we didn't go through the same thing that they did. And we have to watch them struggle, and then we ridicule them because they're out there. I have sat and cried and prayed over many different people down there that just need their voice to be heard and their story to be told. They need to feel love that they never felt since they were a child. And I just ask and I plead with you guys to get to know somebody down there so that you can stop spending money on the beautification of this place and start spending money on the beautification of people's mental health.
Hi, my name is Alden Bradford. I was shocked to learn recently that our local government is actively engaged in a harassment campaign against pretty much everybody under the age of about 35. I don't know if it's the local government, or if it's WashDOT, or Kitsap Transit, but down at the transit center, there's a noise generator that's set to a frequency too high for a lot of people to hear. I can hear it just fine. I'm in my 30s. It's very loud. It's painful to stand near it for very long. I'm guessing it was installed as an anti-loitering device. That's what they're marketed as. According to the marketing material, they're as loud as a pretty loud concert, and it is very unpleasant to stand near it. It takes active work to do that sort of thing, to put that in there. I personally believe, I'm not a lawyer, that it's already illegal under Bremerton's noise ordinance and the Constitution's equal protection under the law for everybody. But that's really got to go, and it's right in the first place that anyone visiting the city would see. And it's not a very welcoming impression that it leaves on people. And for years, I thought it must have been just a mistake, a faulty piece of lighting or something, putting out that noise, but no, I went down there, took a picture. It's an actively deliberately installed device making that noise. Yeah. And I'll set aside my complaints about the concept of making a rule against loitering at a transit center. It takes a lot of gall, I think, to say, well, your ferry is delayed by an hour, but while you're waiting, please don't loiter. Yeah, it's just strange to me. Yeah, I'm not sure, again, what agency put it up, but I believe it is illegal. I believe it should be taken down. If we need to write a new law to clarify that position, maybe we do, but it really should not be in our city. Thank you.
Caleb Reach, District 5. I'm up here again with tax papers for the apartment complexes that aren't paying taxes. I'm gonna add to three of the other stories here. Quincy Square, it looks great. Looks beautiful. It's not for everybody. Let's be perfectly clear, it's not for everybody. Okay, here we get to the numbers. If anybody remembers West Park, I lived in West Park as a child, lived in West Park as an adult. Affordable housing, not great, but it was affordable. A lot of people displaced. And then it was sold as a new community for mixed, mixed, mixed housing, some for sale, some low income, some senior apartments. There is a senior apartment that's brand new, the nursing home, and there is one low-income building. It might be two buildings, but it's one, one complex. So we're gonna talk about with Ambrose. Okay. Ambrose is paying taxes just on the land. Land value is $594,000. Building value assessed $63 million. $63 million. $63 million building is paying to the city of Bremerton $1,310. That's their tax liability for the year. Gross. Schools, $1,700 to the schools. I think that there's probably kids that live in that building. PUD, a whopping $26. The port, $116. To the library, $163. Gross. Pretty soon, we're not going to have any money in Bremerton with federal dollars being cut and then state dollars being cut. Bremerton's going to be sink or swim. Somebody's going to have to figure it out because it's only going to get worse. There's no place to live. If somebody in the shipyard can't afford a place to live, then nobody else has a chance. Like, nobody has a chance. I'm so sad about what happened, somebody dying. I didn't even want to say this, but you brought it up. My best friend of 45 years, daughter died on MLK, April 25th, 2023. Unnecessary, absolutely unnecessary. The city has to do better. A lot of toilets can be put down there. I, I never see anything bad going on down there. I, I drive down there, I walk down there, and I don't see people doing anything but minding their business and waiting for Salvation Army to open to eat, or waiting to go across the street to get something from Burger King, which is going to be closed soon, and that's a whole other problem, but you gotta do better.
Hello, Naomi Levine, Bremerton resident. Speaking of bathrooms, I did some field research over the weekend because it was the bridge blast, and you know me, I love talking about bathrooms. And also I needed to use one, and so then I had to make a bunch of observations as I spent a bunch of time looking for a bathroom. We put in some porta-potties on the waterfront and then locked the bathrooms that are already there. Did not great. Like, if you already have a bathroom there and you know you need more bathrooms, why take away the existing bathroom access in order to then put in the porta-potties? So I, I wouldn't recommend that, and I have thoughts about it, but there was also really long lines for all of the bathrooms, which is great. It means that people found a bathroom and eventually were able to use it, but I found myself in a really desperate situation. We're friends, TMI, but no big deal. And I, I found myself really desperate. I really needed a bathroom, and I was down by the waterfront, and I was like, there are at least a couple dozen people waiting for these porta-potties, and it's going to take me a really long time to get in. I'm going to walk up the hill and see what I can find. I'd been at the Roxy, and I knew there was a lot of people using those bathrooms. It was a gorgeous location. Don't mind me. I like using the bathrooms in the Roxy. Not recreationally, I promise I'd buy a ticket. Um, but you know, I thought, okay, well, I know those bathrooms are full. There was a good crowd there, fantastic event. It's a hassle to get a bathroom out of the complex where cups and ballast is because there's a whole lot of people. You gotta bother somebody to get a key for it. I get why they do that, but it's a whole deal to try to get a bathroom, and there were tons of people there all also trying to like use services and probably use the bathroom because they're also humans with ladders and other things. And so I thought, well, shoot, I guess I'll keep going. And super fortunate for me, I had bought a house several blocks further away from there very recently that does actually have a functioning toilet. So where I started at, where the bridge blast was going to be happening, I then left my husband and mother-in-law there to walk across town behind the planetarium to use that bathroom because there were lines everywhere. And I'm not saying it's a bad thing to have a line, but what I am trying to point out is that we have a clear need for bathrooms. People like using them. Go figure. And it'd be really great to have more of them permanently available so that I don't have to walk across town to use the bathroom continuously. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andy Soderstrom, and I also wanted to complain about the tones at the ferry terminal. I'm aware of these tones. They're called a mosquito tone, and they are commonly deployed as a frequency between 17 to 20 kilohertz. Not everyone is born with the ability to hear at this frequency. So it is said to be like to deter young people from congregating. But older people, as Alden said, are also able to hear at this frequency, and it is not just annoying, but hurts some people, especially those with sensory problems. Hearing deteriorates as you age, but not everyone Hearing deteriorates as you age, but not everyone loses the ability to hear at this frequency, so this does affect wide groups of people. And I am very aware that this is a common and deliberate measure deployed as a form of hostile architecture, making public spaces very unfriendly to those utilizing them just for transit purposes, waiting, existing in spaces that, as far as I'm aware, are at least partially maintained by statewide tax revenues. Not only do we have little to no third spaces left for young people or just people in general who these tones are allegedly for, I suspect that this also is probably another measure to like attack the homeless population in the area, and I am not for this whatsoever, and I think that they should be removed immediately. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chance Corey. I live in District Five. I have to say, I'm just disappointed in the council and the mayor. I went out to Paulsboro on the first of June, and Mayor Becky Erickson stood on the steps of City Hall and read a Pride proclamation. Paulsboro Pride is not till after Kitsap Pride. It is the first weekend in September. Do you know what the City of Bremerton has done for Pride so far? There is one single post on Facebook. There's not a proclamation. There's not a resolution from this council, and the flag did not fly all Pride long. Now, I know there are other considerations, so I waited. I wanted to give you guys a chance to do something all throughout June. We're now in July. I know that previously there's been an issue celebrating Pride before Juneteenth, so I wanted to make sure that wasn't an issue and that you guys had a chance to act for that. But based on the mayor's actions previously this year and continued neglect, I'm wondering if you guys don't realize that this part of your community is constantly under attack, and so not doing things that are normally done is just as bad as actively doing the harm. Taking away protection and taking away tradition is the same as actively doing the harm. And so I'm just coming with a simple request. I would like to see a resolution from the council acknowledging June and the weekend in July, the seventeenth through the twentieth, as Pride in Bremerton, and I would like the flag to fly for thirty days outside the Norm Dick's Building. Thank you.
Jose Camacho, friends of Snidcove, Rock to Black. This is a city at war against regular people, the marginalized and the powerless, you know, working class, because renters are screwed here. One of the weapons of war is disinformation and propaganda. And the beautiful Quincy Square project is an example of that. Because that could have been launched in a way that was honest and okay. But it started with the extremely privileged Wesley Larson, Steve Seagull, Steve Rice, the developers in town, the top dog developers. It started with them getting help from the city, immediately snatching funds for the needy. HUD, CDBG funds three hundred thousand dollars. You know, and it's hard to absorb that. I don't know if you guys are aware. I know good knowledge. There's, but there's other facts. You look at the publications by the Forest Reaction Group. They proposed this idea. I'm quoting this, "Lift us from poverty." Other literature, the description of the Quincy Square project says it's expected we will have two hundred and thirty-four affordable housing units. It's literally there. So the project started with deceit. And the fact that Quincy Jones, that great man is being used as a name, was a marketing idea by Emily Russell. She was watching TV, a talk show, and she saw him being interviewed, and she said, hey, that would be a great idea. Why? Because it's one of the favorite pastimes of privileged white people who want to be thought of as nice and kind to the hordes, that they treat some black people, they might even idolize them. It's a marketing ploy. So you guys need to try some honesty, because you're not a lobby, you're public servants. You have a duty to be truthful. Not only that, you have a duty not to mislead us. And that includes omissions. And what I have seen, I've never heard of it any other place, is a city council, a mayor's office is just incapable of honesty. Everything is PR, everything is lobby talk. It's all deceit. It really is. Look, look up this statute, RCW forty-two dot two zero dot zero four zero. That's your duty to be honest to us, and you're not being that.
Last call for public recognition. All right, folks, we'll go ahead and close public recognition. As our clerk said, there's no general business items, so we'll turn to council reports. Since it's the first council meeting in the month, we'll start with Councilmember Chamberlain.
Hello, everyone. Happy fucking Pride Month. Where is our flag, right? I, we've been asking for the entirety of the year for the HOA to take it up. They have not. They have chosen not to take it up, and I don't really know why. I've gotten some answers here. I've gotten some answers there. I haven't gotten any answers, and it's really frustrating, so I want, I don't know what else to do. We made a proclamation last year. I did not realize that we need to make a proclamation every year for this to be a thing. I thought a proclamation was in perpetuity. Is it not? I don't know the answer to that. We put a Pride flag up upstairs for today, and I have a picture of it, for what it's worth. I'm told that if we display it for public view, that that could be a violation of our HOA. I don't know what to do. I have some pictures. Okay, we'll do some other stuff first. We'll talk about some other fun stuff first. I got to go on a little bike ride with our West Sound Cycling Club, with Diane Iverson and Paul Duckey. They took me up Pine Road, which is, you, you guys are gonna hear me talk about Pine Road. We've talked about Pine Road. There's some projects coming forward through Public Works to make Pine Road safer. And my hope is that they move forward before something serious happens. It was a really nice ride. I was able to see how absolutely no changes or improvements have been done on Pine Road since it was annexed from the county. It was in the exact same condition from one end of Pine Road and the city limits to the county limits. And we also, it was really illuminating. I got to see kind of the disjointed ness of not having a plan, not having a plan for bike lanes, for sidewalks, for our pedestrians, so that it was continuous around the city. But it was a lovely, just a short seven-mile ride, and I really appreciated that time that I got to spend with them and, and learn from them. The next one is something pretty silly. I was out at the Bremerton Farmers Market. This is Priscilla with Waste Management. I got, I won a spork because I guessed right about recycling. And I just wanted to just give Priscilla props for being out there and having fun with the neighborhood and the, the farmers market people. And tell her, just thanks. I think she's got a picture of me too somewhere. The next slide is the best that I can do for now, y'all. So there we go. I don't know. I guess that meets the minimum requirements, but it's important to me. Just like it's important to a lot of folks in our community, that the Pride flag is displayed. I know there's just some discussion about which flag is which, but you know what? My liberation is tied to your liberation, and that Pride flag means, means that to me. And it means that to most of our community members. I'd like to see this become something bigger. And I'd like for folks to be not so scared and not so risk averse. It's actually disgusting to me. That's all I really have to say. Thanks for coming out and sharing everything today, folks. You're being, I mean, you're heard. I, I, I know that there's some folks that think there's some big conspiracy theory. I'm a renter. I make thirty-six hundred dollars a month. I'm doing the best I can. My son and his boyfriend live with me, cuz they can't afford to get a house either. I'm, I'm like y'all. You know, I'm like a regular-ass person. And there is no conspiracy here from this seat. I don't believe it from my colleagues. We're just doing the best we can to represent you. So please keep coming to us, talking to us, sharing us, sharing with us your, your issues, and we're gonna do the best we can with what we got, with our limited powers. We can make laws. We can approve money. That's kind of where we are, where, where our limit falls. Thank you. That's all for my report today.
Thank you, Vice President Revloski.
Hi, I think I have a couple slides that I wanted to start with. Our Lady Star of the Sea is having gardening lessons, and they're gonna be Tuesday evenings. The next one is on July eighth, and I think it's great. You can bring your kids up there. There's storytelling. It's a real family event, and I hope you stop in and check it out. Next slide, please. So Counselor Mockler and I went to this really great leadership summit at the Bremerton Food Line the other night. And it shows where we are in our community, where we're getting food, so that we can redistribute it, because it's all sent to the Bremerton Food Line warehouse. And so from there, then they distribute it out to all these different places, which makes it way more effective. Before, everybody was having to go and pick up their items separately. And if you haven't been to the Bremerton Food Line, I highly recommend it. They always need volunteers. If you need some extra groceries to get you through the month, they're kind and it's just, it's a wonderful asset in our community. And one thing that we have to keep in mind, they buy produce from some of our very small microfarms around here. So it keeps those little farms going when they have the money to purchase fresh produce. But of course, a lot of our federal, state grants, loans, whatever, are disappearing, so it's gonna be harder for them to support the farms which support our community. So those of you in the community who are able to donate cash, that is really helpful to them. Canned goods are great, too. They give out hygiene supplies to families. So there, it's just, it's a great nonprofit, and they need our help. Kind of next slide, please. So this is how it used to be. See that mesh where everybody had to go pick up all their things separately? I probably should have shown this before. But now it works so much better. They're so much more efficient. It's saving all of our food banks a lot of money by us being the hub here in Bremerton. Is that it for my slides, Michael? Okay, so there's a couple other things I wanted to talk about. First, a real quick explanation for those of you who don't know it. The Minette Bridge had to be closed all day on the twenty-eighth to set up for the fireworks. And in the past, they've allowed pedestrian and bicycle access during the day, and they didn't close off access till they were ready to start lighting them off. There's a different fireworks operator now who's following the law, which means, once they start placing any explosives, something like per one inch of explosion explosive device, you have to be seventy feet away. So anyway, with the amount of explosives they were setting up on the bridge, you had to be five hundred and eighty feet away. So the bridge had to be closed. So hopefully next year we can come up with some solutions so that people who live on the east side don't have to drive all the way around to go downtown to enjoy it. The next thing is also about fireworks. I keep hearing how there's less and less complaints about fireworks, and that's because it's harder and harder for anybody to complain about nuisance and dangerous fireworks being set off. So there's no phone number that you can call. If you call nine-one-one, they ask you not to call them unless somebody, of course, is injured or there's a fire. So what you have to do to report any dangerous or nuisance or illegal fireworks going off is you have to go to kitsapnineoneone.org website, and there's a place there to report it. So the only time in the City of Bremerton limits that you're allowed to light off fireworks is from eleven o'clock tomorrow morning, July third, to eleven fifty-nine PM on July fourth. And these are all handheld or ground-based, no aerials, no M-80s, no big bombs. And then last for my report is, on July twelfth, besides Quincy Square opening up, there's also a really important ceremony happening up at Forest Lawn Cemetery. It's where, once a year, our Kitsap County Coroner's Office buries indigent folks from our community who had no family or friends to bury them. So that ceremony is at ten o'clock in the morning up at Forest Lawn Cemetery. There'll be little signs to tell you which part of the cemetery this is happening at. Anyway, have a safe and happy Fourth of July, everybody.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Goodenough.
Yeah, it's not mine. So the, just the, the building here has never flown the rainbow flag. Just wanna kind of clear that up. We've been trying. I think this is the third Pride season. We may have started a little late last time, the first time. And then last year, we thought we were gonna get it done. And then this year, we thought we were gonna get it done, but I will say that most years, Mayor Wheeler has actually come to Kitsap Pride to borrow a flag and has flown it from his office up on this, up on the top floor. You know, I've, I've, I've been doing Pride for, I think, twenty-seven years now here in Kitsap. And so it's a very busy time for me, and, but I do wish we maybe had pushed on that a little harder from our end as well as the, from the council. But, but Pride is happening around the clock, around the year, around the world, around the globe, whether, whether our, our building's HOA can get approved or not. And that being said, some Seattle Pride was this weekend. We had a Kitsap and Bremerton had a great showing in the Seattle Pride parade. We've actually won best entry a few years, so we're waiting for the results to come out. We, let's see, coming up, actually Pride as part of the Quincy Square opening is doing a silent disco in front of the Roxy on the twelfth in the afternoon, kind of after the small stage programming wraps up. And then we're gonna kick off the formal Pride weekend on July eighteenth, which is also my birthday, with a DJ and little party on the USS Turner Joy. And we're excited for that. The festival will be three to eight at the Kitsap County Fairgrounds. And then there's a drag brunch the next morning at the Minette Saloon to help us start fundraising for next year. So come out and participate in Pride if you can. There's been some, there's been great events. People Exchange had something this past weekend as well. And, and they're gonna be doing something really cool at Pride, but that's all I have. And, you know, even though Pride Month might be officially over, I, it's, that's, that's just the dedicated month. We're just getting started here. So thank you. Have a great and safe Fourth of July, everyone.
Thank you. So Councilmember Remachler is feeling, I believe, a little bit under the weather tonight, so I will give her report. She's hosting a affordable housing forum with Bremerton City Councilor Anna Mockler on July fourteenth, as you can see in the PowerPoint here from five to six-thirty PM. We got three We got three notable speakers that evening. Tony Ives from Kitsap Community Resources, Jill Stanton from Bremerton Housing Authority, and John Dombowski from the Washington Department of Commerce. And you can see the subjects there, housing, the homeless, subsidizing supportive housing, affordable housing. And also note that there's quite a bit of time open for questions and discussions with the community. If you have any additional questions, you see Anna's email address there, anna.mockler@bremtonwa.gov. If for whatever reason you don't have all this written down, again, July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, just give the city council's office a call, and we'll happy to connect you with the program. And that's it for Councilmember Mockler's reports. Reminder that the next study session will be on Wednesday, July ninth, beginning at five P M on the sixth-floor council conference room with a remote option available by Zoom. Everyone have a safe and happy Fourth of July. This concludes tonight's regular council meeting. Meeting is adjourned.